If we could recite the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And through the public.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under gun. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Our first agenda item is public speaking. Do we have any public speak? Looks like done. Thank you. We have any additions or deletions of the agenda? Also hearing none, I guess we'll move on. Town administrators' report. You gonna get Eric back?
Is there something we can bounce forward to and come back to Eric?
Yeah, I think we. Think we can just take our agenda items out of order, although technically we need a motion maybe to do that.
Oh, here's Eric.
You're unmuted.
Buddy, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Just trying to get some last minute stuff done before the meeting.
Now, we're, uh, we're at agenda item number four, which is town administrator's report.
Okay, let me share my screen here. All right, are you guys all seeing that?
Yep.
Okay, first off, I just wanted to say, unfortunately, last week, one of the Andover firefighters passed away of a heart attack. His name was Gary Calvi, or Calbo, sorry. If any of you want to contribute, there is a GoFundMe campaign to help pay for his funeral expenses. You can find the link at the Andover support group. If you don't have it and you want it, you can also get me offline. The other really good news, actually, this is a day out of date, is that the first delivery of vaccine in the state of Connecticut was yesterday. So hopefully, we are slowly starting to see the tail end of what we've been going through for the past eight to 10 months. That's the good news. Here's the bad news. As of today, we've had sixty-three positive COVID cases in one death in the town. When I talked to you at the November meeting, we had had twenty-nine. So we've gone from twenty-nine to sixty-three in a month. I know we've talked a lot in town about the positivity rate. This is our fourteen-day correction, our infectivity rate. If you could look at it, the last time we met was back around the seventeenth or eighteenth, and we were at twenty-four, and as of today, we're about seventy-one. So we're obviously not progressing in a good direction at the moment. We're pretty much right now at about the national and Connecticut average for COVID infections. We had been lagging behind for a long time, but in the first fifteen days of this month, we've had thirty new infections in town, which is a bummer, obviously. So I'm not going to show you these graphs. The other thing that's been of concern is, you know, we've gone from, in basically two months, from a hundred and ten to twelve-hundred people hospitalized in the state of Connecticut. So far, over the last week and a half or so, that's really leveled off, which is good. Nobody knows exactly why. There's no expectation that it's continued to be leveled off because the number of infections keep increasing, and the number of people hospitalized tracks almost perfectly, but delayed about a week or two from that number. So anticipate that number to go up. The governor has announced just recently that they're going to open the Hartford Convention Center as a COVID overflow treatment center. So if you were planning on going to any conventions in the next couple of months, I would say that's probably not starter. We did get a rebate from the state for our COVID-related expenses up to this point, and it was right around seven thousand dollars. So basically, what I'm going to do is refund the library their share of the COVID-related expenses and utilize the rest at the town level. Now, in addition to that, we just got announced, in fact, I was just on a conference call just before that when they were giving out the details. There will be an initial allotment of COVID rebate money for the towns. Andover's allotment will be about twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty bucks, which is pretty cool. I've got about a day to jump through the hoops and fill out all the paperwork. And we have to have we have to have earmarked the money by December thirty-first, which is somewhat unrealistic. So what the state has said is they've given towns the option of putting that money towards public safety. They said you can put the money in the general fund, but allocated to offset the costs for public safety and then spend the money you had allocated for public safety on other things. So it's a little bit of a paper trail, but the good news is we're going to get an infusion of cash of about twenty-five thousand dollars in the next two weeks. So that's kind of cool. Always a good thing to get free money.
Is that just an allocation based on population, or how is that governed or determined, Eric?
So there's this wacky three-part formula. It's partly population, it's partly population density, and it's partly the grand list divided by the population. So they use three different factors and they weigh it, and they have this really complex formula. So basically, relatively speaking, smaller, more affluent towns such as Andover get a disproportionately small amount of the total funding based on our population, but it's still twenty-four thousand bucks or twenty-five thousand bucks, so it's still a good shot in the arm. And this is federal money that was given to the state. And basically, what happened is many months ago, the, the state asked the towns to tell them roughly what their COVID-related expenses were, but they did it without telling the towns what they could actually credit. So towns credited everything, gave them a number, the money got allocated from the federal government, and then the state came back and said, oh, well, you can't claim that, 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 that. You can only claim this and this and this, which added up to a much smaller number than they had money for. So that was the seven thousand dollars, even though we originally said we were going to have expenses of around, you know, eighteen thousand dollars. So now they've gone back and taken all that extra money because they got to do something with it, and they're just basically giving it to the towns, but the towns have to certify, they're, they're putting it into certain specific categories. So we're going to be able to do that. It's going to be some paperwork, a little bit of running around by myself and the Assistant Finance Director, but not too big a deal either way. So that is going on. So what else? The second thing is that we are going to have to deal with some expenses related to public works. As a lot of you know, Ed Kasich retired as the road crew foreman. He was the road crew foreman for thirty-three years, so which is a long time. I'm happy that he was able, you know, to retire and was in good health. His replacement, Jay Tuttle, starts officially on the twenty-first, but he's actually in the garage right now prepping for the storm. So he agreed to come in today because I kind of told him I expected him to. And he said, okay. So we are switching that position from, Ed was a union member, and we are replacing that with a non-union but working supervisor position. So we're changing the job title, we're changing the job, you know, description to make it more in line with what we really need to, to, you know, kind of get and accomplish at the town. So there's two issues with that. The first is because Ed had maxed out his sick days at over three hundred, and in keeping with the agreement that we had with him, that if he would retire, we would give him, you know, we would credit him with more of his sick days than he ordinarily would be allowed by union contract. We depleted the, the severance fund pretty significantly. Plus, knowing he wasn't, he was going to retire, he didn't take any real vacation this year. So per union contract, we owe him out for his unused vacation as well as a significant fraction of his unused sick days. So, so that will have an impact that we will have to deal with in the next budget cycle. The good news is that there's really only one other employee out there that the town would have any kind of significant exposure if they retired in terms of severance. And that is Tim, Tim Higley, who's one of the other Public Works employees. So if Tim Higley retired, you know, we would owe somewhere in the eight thousand dollar range for severance on Ed or on Tim. So the second thing is because we hired, we hired Jay Tuttle as a salaried employee as opposed to an hourly employee, that's going to do two things. One, it does not affect the overtime or the overtime snow removal budget, but it does increase the amount that will be spent out of the Public Works general salary line item. So we're going to be somewhat under budgeted on that. As of today, we are overspent in OT for Public Works, and we're overspent in the part-time help category. The part-time help category was because we, I employed Richard Bagan for much longer than we had funding for, but I did it because I basically plugged him into the fourth Public Works employee category instead of, because the Board of Selectmen was not going to allow me to hire a fourth person until we actually had a retirement date for Eddie. So I used him essentially as a, as that fourth employee. So we're not overspent, we're just, that money got allocated to a different bucket. The other thing we faced this year is that the two thousand dollars that we overspent in Public Works, that equates to about a hundred and twenty, the, the total overtime budget for Public Works equates to about a hundred and twenty hours of labor. We used a, quite a bit of that on Storm Ayesha doing cleanup because we were, you know, we had them in all weekend, essentially, two days during the weekend, and then overtime several nights. We've also had a total of five events I needed to call the crew in because right now, every time it's windy, we got so many dead trees that we're ending up with road closures almost every time it's windy, which has been a lot this fall, as, as many of you know. Again, the salary line item overall for Public Works is not overspent by any means. In fact, we're under budget overall, so we're in good shape right now. But later in the year, we are going to go over budget because Jay Tuttle has a, you know, a, a quite a bit higher salary than Eddie. But no overtime. So anyway, we'll be able to make it work. It's not going to be a huge deal in this budget, but it is something we're going to have to, to think about. I talked about the storm callouts. So again, the Public Works salary line item right now is thirty-nine percent expended. That's the salary plus temp salary plus overtime, and we're already, you know, almost fifty percent of the way through the budget cycle. So overall, we're good, but two of those three categories are over, one is considerably under. So we have a significant snow event tonight, and just so you all know, to put it in perspective, I would anticipate this storm is going to cost the town a total of around sixty hours of overtime by the time we're all done with that, and probably another ten to twelve hours of help by one of our temps, Mark Williams. So we could expect a total storm cost for this of about three thousand dollars, not including salt. Just to give you a ballpark of where we are. So Finance Department, the, the town of Andover has hired the Assistant Finance Office Officer, sorry. Her name is Marina Pendolfi, and she's working out really well. I've had her training pretty extensively with Laura, who's the business manager for AES, and also somewhat with Barbara. She does make considerably more than the previous Assistant Treasurer, but where she is in salary is kind of at the low end of the comparable compensation scale for somebody in her job position. That department, you know, total, we're going to end up decreasing it from three people to two over between the last budget cycle and this budget cycle. So in the end, we're going to end up roughly the same amount of money, probably a little bit less total spending, but, you know, spending it on two higher-level people rather than three people that were not paid as much. Probably a lot of you remember last year, we had a mix-up with my salary. Basically, when I first took the job, the old Assistant Treasurer, not realizing it was already almost September, took my yearly salary and divided it by the number of months remaining, not divided it by twelve. I didn't catch it. We caught it basically at the end of last year because it seemed, seemed I was making, you know, more money than I should, and that really was the case. So what I did was I took the first three pay periods of this fiscal year off completely and just didn't get a salary, and then I've taken the rest of the money out of just basically cut my salary by that percentage for the remaining months of this year. So I'm basically back to neutral, but out of this budget cycle, I will have underspent the town administrator's budget by around twelve thousand dollars. So we'll be able to put that in either the Finance Officer or the Public Works Supervisor line item. So I guess what I'm saying is overall, we're fine on salary. We're going to be over in a few spots and under in a few spots. Additionally, last year, I approached the board and the board agreed to hire a senior coordinator. I have held off on filling that position because frankly, with COVID, we have such little capability to provide programming. It just didn't seem like now was the time to hire somebody into that position. I do feel strongly that that position is one we will want to fill, but I don't really want to think about filling it until such time as we're in a place where we can actually hold functions and actually program stuff for the seniors. So I'm letting you know, we're going to be considerably under budget on that position, you know, going forward. So the town hall is open. We are what I would call semi-staffed. We're not open to the public, and at this point, we have one employee that's tested positive for COVID-nineteen, and there's several others that are sick that are awaiting test results that could very well be COVID-positive also. So we are moving some offices to remote staffing. We're keeping the staffing levels that we can, but we definitely have some people out, and we're going to be working remote in some offices. As many of you remember, we had an IT security issue related to the, our audit and our audit payment. One of the things that I implemented as a result of that was an IT security training program. So we started that for all the, the staff members, and it's something called Security Mentor, and it's basically just a series of online, you know, trainings in data security, office security, information security, you know, everything to do with electronic transfer of information to hopefully prevent that from occurring again. And I did give a gift certificate to the first person to complete all the trainings. The other thing that's a very recent change is the building official has resigned. We're looking at our options. We have a couple different, well, we have three possibilities for where we want to go with the building official. And part of it is going to be a decision on our part whether we want to do it as a shared service provided by the town of Bolton. Bolton currently is themselves in three other towns, so they, they already provide building official or building department services for multiple towns. So that's one option. The other option would be just hiring a salaried position as a building official, a part-time building official. We have two other individuals that are interested in doing that. So that is going to be more expensive than our existing arrangement with the old building official. However, the old building official has been resisting very heavily the last four to five years, bringing our fee structure in line with that of other towns. And we've gotten to the point where now building departments typically are basically self-supporting, and we've gotten to the point where our building department was only taking in somewhere around fifty, fifty-five percent of their costs in fees because frankly, we were charging a lot less than surrounding towns. So we've undergone a review of all our building department fees, and we're probably over the next month or month and a half going to roll out a new fee schedule and a new way of calculating the fees. So in the end, I think we're going to get the building department to capture a much greater fraction of their total fees. Certainly, our goal is to capture more than eighty percent of the fees or the expenses of the department in fees, which I think is, is completely realistic. So although we're going to end up paying more for a building official, the department overall will be less expensive to the town than it is now. Right now, I think frankly, we're subsidizing the cost of a lot of building and builders in town because we're not, you know, we're not really passing through the costs of all the inspections and the services we provide. Any questions up to this point?
Eric, colonization going to include a, a building permit application that doesn't look like a photocopy of a photocopy of a photocopy that got skewed in the copier?
So we're going to change.
Through the process recently, myself, building the shed in my property.
Yeah, so I, I think we need to look at all the forms we have. You know, and honestly, that's been a struggle that I tried to take on about a year and a half ago when I first came in, but the, the building official was, was fighting me pretty aggressively on that. So, so yes, we are looking at our fee schedule, and we're looking at the way we give information to the public. And the one thing I think we will consider in the next year to two years is consider going to an online permitting system. They are not inexpensive. Most of the towns around us have gone to online permitting systems, not all of them, but most. You know, so I, I, I think, I think we can capture enough fees to make it fairly cost-neutral to the town. It will be more expense on the part of builders, but when you think about it, what we're only talking about is for, for a normal town, a normal town, roughly one point five percent of the cost of a renovation or a new building is the permitting fees. So, you know, we're not talking about a radical increase to, I mean, our permit fees are going to go way up, but in terms of actual project cost for developers, it's not that much of a, a jump, and it's relatively in line with what other towns are doing. Senior social, shoot, your question?
Yeah, Eric, I just, you know, do we have any concern here where if we jack up the costs of doing these sorts of things that we might depress the amount of construction going on in town?
I think if people are being honest, we're talking about a change from basically one percent of the construction cost to about one point five percent of the construction cost. So the actual percentage difference cost in the job should be fairly miniscule if builders were being honest with us in the past.
Okay.
Which some are and some are not. Senior social services, we're still running under budget because right now, we're still just providing, you know, kind of the bare essential services. You know, we have had a couple emergency requests this month. We do have a small fuel reserve account. We've spent some money out of that, but not much, and social services has provided, you know, a couple of small items for residents. We also have, many of you know, a land acquisition coming up to town meeting in January. It got delayed from December, basically based on bad logistics. So this is going to be pretty cost-neutral to the town because one of the properties is owned by a land trust, and the other one is landlocked. We're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars difference in taxable income to the town. So we're not talking about anything that's going to affect the grand list in any significant way. The Library Vandal Murals, their court docket is coming up. We have, when I say we, I mean the royal we, isn't Amanda filed the paperwork with the court for restitution on the town. So hopefully, we will get refunded for that, and we will have to in turn partially refund our insurance company who's given us some money for that already. I, the, the town got a grant for about eight thousand dollars for two new speed radar signs. Most of you know, we approved and funded one last year, and we're getting two more for free for the state. And it was just kind of a weird grant program that I heard about like six months ago, and I shot him off a quick email and said, hey, don't forget Andover, we'd like one of those too. And they called me kind of out of the blue last week and said, you're not getting one, you're getting two. I'm like, okay, so we're getting two of them. Actually, we already have them. They're in Public Works, but we haven't put them up yet. So that's kind of cool. It's, uh, we're going to use them on some of the roads that have had, we've had crash data indicating excessive speeds. So the first one will probably go up on Bunker Hill for a period of time, and the second one will go up on Gillian. And then after that, we'll move them around every couple of months. These are kind of cooler because they have their own solar power system, so we won't have to, the Stryker unit we have now, we got to replace the battery like every five days, which kind of sucks.
So these are, these are intended to be temporary, temporarily located and portable?
Yep, exactly, although they're not that portable. If you know the size of the one we have, this one, that's a fifteen-inch one. The ones, the two we got are thirty-inch ones, so they're basically twice as big, well, four times, twice as long, twice as wide as the, the existing one. And they come with three of the same-sized batteries that the And they come with three of the same sized batteries that the last one had one battery in. So it's quite a bit beefier than what we have. So we're going to get those in and hopefully use them. And the the great thing is like the one we have now, they're also good for data collection, so we can actually keep the the display off. And we can just run them for a couple of weeks in each location and just collect all the the bend speed data of how fast people are going and when. We're kind of doing that now with the unit we have. And then I'm working with the resident state trooper on enforcing at the times where we're getting the worst, we're having the worst speeding program and trying to kind of tailor our our response to knock down some of the the really aggressive speeds that we're seeing. Okay. We're probably going to use some town aid road money to use a weather forecasting service that's specific to Public Works. Right now, we're trialing one. And we're looking at another one called Weather Works. We'll probably do Weather Works. The person we're, that's taking over at Public Works prefers Weather Works to. So I've been demoing one and he's had the other for a bunch of years. And, you know, we kind of looked at him head to head and said, okay, this one does this, this one does that. So I think we're going to end up going with Weather Works. But we'll pay for that out of town aid road money, so it won't really affect the town budget per se. At the last meeting, I asked for a additional allocation for the brush pile chipping. We chipped that in, got that all out of the way, so that was great. And we were able to drop about fifteen loads of chips at the Andover Sportsman's Club because they they wanted to use it for keeping down weeds. And so I used Public Works to just drop them as much as as they could handle. So that was good. We worked with the town engineer on developing the detention basin at the transfer station, so that project, the transfer station is basically fully wrapped up. Other than I think at some point we should still replace the door to the blue building because the the door right now is propped open. It takes the backhoe to open the door. And the bottom of it's so rotted, you know, it's it's either gotta, we either gotta remove the door or we gotta replace the door. And I think, I think we're, it's probably worth looking at replacing that door at some time sooner rather than later. The Bunker Hill Bridge project, as most of you know, structurally, the Bunker Hill Bridge is down to it's like a four, either a four or three. It's pretty bad. So we have started working on the the replacement. Close Jensen and Miller, who's the engineering firm that's been hired to do that. The survey has been completed. And they're in January, they're going to be do doing test borings in the area to try to understand what the soil bearing capability is for the final design. It looks like we should hopefully still be on track for a spring twenty twenty start date for the replacement of that bridge. Which would be good because I don't think we'd get much farther than that before weight limits or closure got put on that culvert based on its structural rating currently. Hutchinson Road Culver, we have a fairly large sized culver on Hutchinson Hutchinson Road where the end walls fell off. And the metal hoop is around fifty-five years old and is really badly degraded. That's one per our engineer is one of the two that are kind of most in need of immediate replacement. We've actually shrunk that that part of Hutchinson Road up, so it's only one lane because we're one of the lanes is is kind of not really safe anymore. So we need to get that one done. We are starting the survey and wetlands analysis of that. The hydrology calculations are done, so we need a survey and the wetlands delineation before we come up with a preliminary design. So I'm hoping to have that done by the end of January. We don't have enough money in the bridge and culvert fund to pay for the bridge replacement. But there are some possibilities. One, I think we should continue to fund that and then we should make a decision kind of going forward and that will be done in part with CIP, whether we try to fund it in this upcoming budget or whether we try to do a different, you know, funding source. Like, I mean, we do have some low SIP funds that we could potentially apply to that. We have around fifty thousand dollars in the bridge and culvert funds. We have enough to get us completely through the design phase. But we certainly don't have enough to to actually build it. Construction costs on that are going to be somewhere in a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollar category to replace that. And that is just because the regulatory environment has changed from when that culvert was put in. I mean, that was basically put in, you know, fifty-five years ago. And somebody stood back with their thumb and said, you know, that river takes about a, you know, this culvert. And they went and buried a couple culverts and put a road over the top. And, you know, the the regulations required in culvert replacement are a lot stricter than they were then. And because of the drainage basin that drains that area is over one square mile, you basically have to start with the core of engineers and kind of work backwards as to what's required. So that's Hutchinson, Times Farm Bridge. We're I've said this a million times. So I don't want to say we're getting close to wrapping up that bridge project. For those of you know, that bridge was was finished and opened in two thousand seventeen, but was never closed out. What's happened is that the company who did the design and construction management on it, the two individuals involved on the Andover part of the project have both left the company and gone somewhere else. So we have had to submit paperwork to the DOT reassigning to other people to that job for the final closeout. But DOT has to certify those individuals and has to certify their pay rates before they're allowed to do the final closeout. So we are so close. I mean, there's literally like six or seven hours of work remaining on CME's part. There's only one discrepancy that they have to work out with the contractor. But, you know, we're just, right now, we're waiting on DOT to actually say, yeah, those two people are okay. We sent them resumes. I had to send them a letter saying they're acceptable from the town. So we're waiting on that. Annoying. I told you last month, we did get the steep grant that will help pay for the paving of the first section of Long Hill Road as well as the first section of Shoddy Mill Road. So got a bunch more paperwork to do with the state, which shouldn't surprise any of you. The connectivity grant is kind of stalled right now because Division One of DOT still won't issue us a letter saying that they will later give us an encroachment permit. And that's because the contractor that is doing the upgrade of the pedestrian signals still is not finished the project. They were supposed to be done in September, but it's clearly not September and they're clearly not done. So the good news is we had we had bid that project out through something called EZIQC, which is a procurement program run by the Capital Regional Council of Governments. As of of January first, they, so they rebid that every two years and the new bid is out January first. Unfortunately, at the meeting today, they awarded the contract to the same contractor we already had. So the good news is there's, we're not starting over, but there will be a new price schedule. So the fees will change slightly, but it won't take any more work on our part. Again, we're not doing anything until the the DOT actually gets the first part of the project finished and then issues us our letter. So revaluation, the revow process is underway. I talked to the contractor. The contractor said as of last Friday, they were twenty-seven percent of the way through all the field work for revaluation. We still have not locked in prices for oil and diesel. They've been kind of fluctuating. I think they'll still go down a little bit because I think more and more towns and areas are going to end up in lockdown. And I think that's going to knock down the price again. So we're holding off, but we're going to do it sometime in the next fifteen days because I don't want to go into the next fiscal year without understanding what our prices are for the next budget season. I just wanted to give you a quick look at the expenses I'm considering out of the the Building and Maintenance Fund. We talked about the overhead door at the transfer station. We are planning on putting in a personnel door at the rear of the Public Works building. Right now, there's the two large, or there there's the large overhead door, but there's no human door. And it seems kind of stupid that every time somebody has to walk out the back of the building, you got to hit the whole overhead door, raise the overhead door, walk up, go to the one of the vehicles, close the door again. So we're going to put in just a personnel access door. I've asked the electrician to give us a quote on upgrading the electrical system at Veterans Memorial Park. You know, because that's in bad shape. Every time we have a any kind of electrical storm, the lights go off down there. It trips all the breakers. It's an old system. It wasn't put in very well. I mean, and we're talking about potentially in the future installing a new well and some other stuff there. So we're going to need to upgrade the electrical to do it. I asked Lenko for a quote to do that. We're also looking at electrical upgrades to the town hall. I realize that we're talking about adding a standalone senior slash community center right behind the building. So we're, we're, all the things we're looking at, we're looking at doing so that it will complement that and we won't have to do any rework if we do build that building there. But we have a couple of things we have to deal with. The first is that we kept blowing circuit breakers or fuses every time we use the air conditioner in the registrar's room. Wally's been complaining about that now for about eight months. But I, what I wanted to do is I didn't want to do it as a standalone. I wanted to do it when we updated the main, one of the main electrical panels we have, which was the original one for the building. It's made by a company called Stablock. And Stablock panels have been not allowed for about thirty years because they were a fire hazard. I know the company I worked with, we were not not allowed to touch or connect anything to a Stablock panel. The only time we would touch a house with a Stablock panels if we built in the cost of a new main service panel when we did it. We also have a problem in that the 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 things that are backed up on on the emergency generator aren't really logical. And there's a bunch of things that aren't backed up that needs to be backed up, one of them being our new server. So it's kind of annoying that we have a server with this giant uninterrupted dual uninterrupted power source, but still two hours after the power goes out, you know, we lose our server because we don't have any plugs in that room that are backed up. So you know, we've kind of gone room to room and looked at what needs to be backed up and what's not needed to be backed up. And it's not a question of power availability. It's just a question of it wasn't they just backed up a single panel and the other panel has no backup circuits. And there's a lot of swapping around that needs to be done. So that that we desperately need just to be able to function during an extended outage because we have some real stupid things like in my room, for instance, my computer works because the plugs work. But none of the lighting in my room works. So, you know, I can use my computer, but I sit in the dark. So there's a lot of little things like that 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 need to be corrected. I've got a proposal out with Lenko to to do that. And again, that would be taking taken out of our existing capital fund for for building maintenance. So that's basically it for my report unless you guys have specific questions about any of that stuff from me. Or are you sick of hearing me by now?
Good overview. Anybody have any questions for Eric?
Yeah, I I do, Eric. You mentioned in the beginning of your report about the you have the salary, the Public Works salaries all in one fund? Is the, is a new supervisor in that same, same fund?
He is currently because Public Works is just the way our account structure is. There's just, there's a salary line item for Public Works and there's an overtime line item and there is a temp help line item. So yes, he is included in that overall pool of employee for Public Works.
Okay, so are the the temp and the those other, you know, the temporary employees, are they, they're listed in that same, that same category?
Yeah, they're one line item below it. They're all part of that same basic budget though.
Wouldn't you think that the, I mean, the union members of the Public Works, which we're going to have three now, one non-union supervisor who's, you're saying he's got a sizable, larger salary than Eddie had. Should he be listed like like most other town employees are that have you know, that they're not you're working through a union contract?
So basically, given our existing financial account structure, that is something we're looking at as we change our chart of accounts as we adopt a new software, financial software for the town. That may change with that, but right now there's no other line item for salary over, other than the ones we have. So, but you're right, it's it's, it would not a bad, be a bad idea to break out the supervisory aspect of that from the rest.
I just think for transparency reasons, you know, for townspeople when they're, when they're wondering, you know, like myself, maybe they should be, they should be listed like that.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and I mean, his, his contract's a public document. If you would like me to forward you all a copy of his contract, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I'd like one, please.
Okay. Let me just write a note. Okay.
I have a question. A couple of months ago, when we went into executive section about the fraud, did town lose any money or did we get everything? Everything was resolved?
It has not been resolved. So the way it stands right now is we finally got back from our bank, the one after Regent's Bank, that the money is unrecoverable. So we have made a claim through Kermatt for our insurance company. And they will cover a portion of that, probably not the whole thing. But our auditor, they've admitted that they're partially liable for that and they have put in a claim with our own or with their insurance carrier also. So we are, I'm sure going to be out our deductible, which is a thousand dollars. My guess is, and I can't guarantee this, but my guess is that that's going to be basically the limit of our liability because we're going to accept our insurance company settlement. We're going to pay that to the auditor and then the auditor is going to go after their cyber liability policy for the remainder of the month. So that's, that's basically how it looks like it's going to shake out at this point.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, it's really kind of, I mean, what's been interesting to me, and the, the other thing I would like to say is that we are going to, I am working with Kirma on purchasing a standalone cyber liability policy to better cover the town. I don't know whether we're going to opt for that, just simply because the cost basis of that is likely to be fairly high. And we may not want to, we may roll the dice instead of being willing to spend the money. But I want to put together the package for you and have the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance review it and say, is this worth adopting or not? Basically, the cyber liability claims overall have been absolutely going through the roof. So the, the, the deductible has gone up considerably. The deductible initially for us was around a thousand dollars. The deductible right now in the next year's policy will be one hundred thousand dollars. So there's a pretty considerable difference. And they're apparently talking to our Kirma rep, that's kind of changing on a daily basis because there have been so many claims, you know, by municipalities, so many claims, so many municipalities have gotten whacked that the insurance is getting incredibly expensive. So I got, you know, we're probably looking, you know, in the fifteen to seventeen thousand dollar range or more for a policy for the town of Andover. But, you know, I don't want to tell you, I, I want to put together, have them come back to me with an actual policy, you know, and then I'll present it to the board and say, this is what the actual cost would be to do this. But that part's a little scary, you know? Does that answer your question, Linda? Okay.
Any other questions for Eric? Okay, well, let's, I guess move on to our next agenda item, which is the Treasurer's Report. Eric, if you can address that, I mean, I've looked over the summary, I don't really have any comments other than that I trust that you'll be procuring a PDF generation software so that we don't have this annoying badge there at our printouts.
Yeah, this, this is a little ridiculous, I'm not sure why that appeared all of a sudden. Yeah, I don't quite understand why that has occurred. But yeah, that's clearly not acceptable because it cuts off a significant fraction of the, of the lines, but we can certainly do better in the future and have a fully readable document, so for that I apologize. Are there any specific line items that you want me to address or you have questions about?
I didn't see anything from my part, the, everything that you, it looked like it was a little bit of an anomaly you've already addressed in your presentation.
Okay.
But if anybody else has any questions, should I entertain that? Anyone? Okay. Hearing none, I guess we can go on to our agenda item number six, which is budget transfers.
I don't have any transfers.
Something here.
Appropriations or over expenditure requests at this time. I probably should have done two for the Public Works Department, but I sort of felt like I wanted it to shake out a little farther and be able to forecast what it would take to cover the whole year to only do it once. And I'm not really there yet, certainly.
Okay. I think we talked about that before, I mean, that makes sense to do some consolidation as long as it's not something unusual or egregious.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Eric on those? Okay, agenda item number seven, talking about old business, the COVID nineteen update, you've already given us kind of a rundown, Eric, and where we are as a town.
Yeah, unless you have.
Town office status.
Yeah, unless you have specific questions, I'll leave it with what I put in my administrator's report. I, I, I wish I had a better feel for how the pandemic is really going to affect us overall budget wise. I can tell you that our tax collections and the amount we're bringing in has been in line or maybe even a little better than previous years. So so far we're not being affected financially. The other thing I would say on that, and, and I've only known about it for like an hour, is the governor signed another executive order today that allows towns to either defer payment on taxes or offer the low interest rate for a period of time again for the January payments. The timing's a little unfortunate because it, it requires the Board of Selectmen to make a decision which approach they want to take. And since there really isn't a meeting scheduled before January first, we're going to have to kind of figure that out. It's unfortunate because they just signed the executive order like an hour ago. So, you know, didn't leave much time in the end of the month to, to work it out. But it, either way, the, the last one didn't really affect the town financially. Our collection still basically came in at the same time. So I wouldn't anticipate this being a major, if we do the same thing we did the last time, I don't think it's going to really affect town finances much. Essentially what we opted for the last time is just allow people relief on the interest accrued, excuse me, on late payments, if that makes sense, as opposed to just deferring collections for a couple of months.
Yeah. Anybody have any other questions on those, on that? Interesting. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item eight, new business. Eight A is the finance director position, you've already touched on that a little bit, Eric, do you want to talk a little more about the process and where we are?
Sure, last Friday we interviewed three people for the finance director position. There was one no show, we're interviewing, we have more interviews lined up, starting noon on Friday. So with the goal of by the end of Friday, calling back for a second interview the following week, you know, one or two of the top candidates we've identified. You know, maybe in person, maybe virtual, kind of depending on what our stance is at that point, be nice to do it in person. But, you know, given the fact that we have had some COVID positives in the town hall, you know, we'll have to make a decision as a committee whether we're willing to do that. It would be nice to do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, Laura's retired as of the seventh of January, is that right?
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much, although she's said she would stay on and help out for a period of time after that. Yep.
Eric, what is the salary for that position?
Uh, it kind of depends on the candidate. I would say a typical finance director, if you do direct salary comparisons, is somewhere a low of about ninety thousand and a high of about a hundred and ten thousand for the small, the medium sized communities. So it's going to be somewhere on the lower end of that scale would be my guess.
Okay, thanks.
But remember too, we're also, as we do this, we're going down from three people with benefits to two people, and if you take the cost of healthcare and everything else as you decrease one person, you know, so I don't think the salary is going to be a great deal less, but I think when you take into account the salary plus benefits, you know, it's going to be somewhat cheaper than what we're paying now.
Any additional questions for Eric on that? Okay, item eight B is the software transition.
So we've gone back and forth this last week answering a bunch of questions for Edmonds about the transition. And they had a bunch of questions, they asked for our last audit, our existing chart of accounts and a bunch of other information which we provided them. I still feel like we should have the new, whoever the, the finance director is going to be in before we make any permanent decisions on what we're going for, for the chart of accounts going forward. I feel like it's a little premature to, to finalize the chart of accounts before we have a finance director that would ultimately be responsible for that chart of accounts. So, but you know, we are, we are working towards it right now and we're providing them the information that they need. But I don't think since they have, forgetting how many municipalities, you told me like twenty municipalities that are going online, January first, you know, transitioning to Edmonds, they're kind of, they're not really, they're not too focused on Andover at the moment until they get all those ones that are January one transitions done. So, but hopefully in January we start, we start working a little, hopefully we have a finance director in place that can give us some good guidance on what exactly we want. And we will, I think at the same time, probably end up doing some account consolidation because we have way too many separate checking accounts and we really don't need. We can use pooled cash and have a lot less total number of accounts. So I think in, in the auditor is working with us a little bit on, you know, that's the one thing the auditor, Michael, said was that he, you know, he really wanted to clean up that aspect as we went through and he would work with us on, on what accounts. I think there's a few areas where we need to make decisions, things that were, that were currently running as balance sheet accounts should probably end up getting reclassified as standalone funds so that we can better account for their, their revenue and expenses. And I think we also, we need to get the chart of accounts set up so that the information needed on our financial statements flows directly from the chart of accounts as opposed to spending months and months of time manipulating. So I think that that's really kind of one of our big goals with the updated chart of accounts is have everything flow to the audit a lot more simply than what is, what is being done today.
Any questions for Eric on that? Okay, item HC is the audit status, that's a good segue.
All right, so this gets tricky. So I've been in contact with Michael, we filed for an audit extension because obviously we will not have completed the audit by January first, surprising no one. They would like to get started in January. So the problem is that we are probably not going to have completed financial statements. And I don't know how to get around that other than assigning that task to the new finance director. We've got a significant portion of it done. But Barbara has, I mean, she's been working for us a day or two here and a day or two there. But clearly she has not finished it and she has no real intention of staying and finishing it. Which I had hoped we'd get a lot farther on the financial statements than we're clearly going to get. So I don't have a good resolution for that. It seems like January one start date for starting in with the auditors probably unrealistic at this point. But I can't tell you what that date's going to actually be. I wish I had better news for you, but I don't.
Any questions for Eric?
Are there any penalties associated with that if you don't have it in time?
Uh, no, not really, I mean, you know, at one point we were about three years behind on the audit. You know, worst case scenario, we're going to be a few months behind on the audit, so we're nowhere near, you know, where we were in the bad old days, but I don't want to, I don't want it to slip any farther than I absolutely have to. If you remember last year, we didn't really even, the, the auditing firm didn't really even start looking at them till like last, you know, March or April. You know, so we're not, we're not really that far off of where we were last year.
I would imagine that one of the impacts would be, we're not in this situation right now, but were we to go to some type of financing or bonding issue, then not having audited financials will have an impact there.
Yes, and the other thing that I think to me is an issue is that without having audited financials, it's really difficult to say how much of the, how much of a surplus we've had and how much we can use from that to offset next year's expenses. That to me is, is almost the bigger issue is understanding where we are. I mean, you know, we know we came in, we know we brought in more money than we budgeted for last year. So we know we have a surplus. And we know we ran less total expenses even with the money that got approved through the Board of Finance and transferred into permanent funds. Even with that, we still had a surplus. So it's not a question of whether we have a surplus or not, we clearly do, it's just a question of what, what is that exact dollar value? And I'm not sure at this point we really, I would be comfortable saying, you know, we have X number dollars to apply to, to the upcoming budget. So that to me is almost the bigger, you know, you know, we're certainly a lot closer than we were in years past, let's put it that way. We don't have the, the big surpluses that we've had in years past to deal with.
We're having some transition in our financial personnel, it would be good just to have final statements and everybody feel comfortable and it, it is what it is and, you know, we know what it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Eric on that? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to agenda item nine, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of Wednesday, November eighteenth. Anybody care to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
I said move.
Okay, Rob's moved to approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda's second, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Kurt's abstaining, he wasn't at the meeting, thank you. Motion passes, thank you. Move on to agenda item ten, which is our liaison reports. I think the only active liaison we may have now is the CIP Committee, Louise, do you have anything for that?
Yeah, at the last meeting, there was some preliminary type of proposals made to have some possible improvements over at the Veterans Memorial Field and also the community center. They were very, very preliminary and we needed additional information as far as cost and just more details. Just more details and that's, I think Shannon was going to bring some more information at the next meeting. And it looks like our next meeting most likely will be Monday. It's going to be a special meeting. Because it's tomorrow night's going to be probably canceled because of the snow. But that was it.
Any questions for Louise? Okay, do we have anything else anybody wants to bring? Yeah, Linda?
Hi, um, A H M. I guess the twenty second. The Oversight Committee meeting is going to meet. They're going to approve the revision of the actual town agreement, which I'm going to read this. Which acts as a foundation for the collaboration between A H M and the three towns. These meetings have been taken place for the past three months and have included town representatives as well as input from A H M and town attorneys. They plan to vote on the revised agreement on twelve twenty two at eleven A M via Zoom. And step two is, the second part of this process is to look into the funding formula. Which will be defined in the Oversight Agreement Addendum. Meetings with the three towns will be scheduled in the new year and act as an opportunity for the towns to look. At a possible revised funding formula. A H M would like to propose taking three data sources into account and averaging them together to. In order to create a formula that is representative of the population and demographics. That are serving A H M and A H M looks forward to meeting with the three towns, da 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 da. That's it.
Linda, have a quick question for you. Do you have a sense for what that formula change would do?
It's, it's really not going to change anybody's by much.
Such a small figure anyway, so I get you.
What it will do is it will smooth things out because right now. Basically based on the your relative population at RAM. Which is kind of an arbitrary and you're trying to switch at least portion. Make it proportional to uh the total population. As opposed to just the school age population. The advantage of tying it directly to the school age population is it aligns the fees. With the population that uses the fees more carefully. But there's a lot more year to year variability and the number goes up, goes down, goes up, goes down. And by population based, it's a much more smooth.
And frankly, if you're using RAM as a proxy, that's completely off, like it that doesn't, A H M is dealing with little kids.
Well, that's what I was going to say. A H M is pre K. And now they're going through young adults, which is through age twenty six, and they actually have. The chores program which helps senior citizens. So it definitely reaches.
Know that Linda, okay.
Yeah. So it definitely reaches a far larger group than RAM.
Right, so I guess using RAM as a proxy is kind of a quick and dirty way of doing it. And they're going to look at doing something a little bit more precise and. Sounds fine to me, I mean. It's not, but I think as you say, I think you're probably right that it regardless, it's not going to do a heck of a lot for our budget.
No, but like I said last time, instead of. Right now, A H M sends up, I don't know if you want to call it. Not a bill, but the the assignment of the fees to the two schools, the Ram High School, the elementary school in the town. The schools don't have any say in the agreement. So it's just going to all go to the town and if the town wants to. Get some money from the schools, it's up to the town to offset it.
So that, okay, so that'll matter because right now it's under the A H S A E S budget and. We would move it.
So. Partially under A E S budget, partially under the town's budget and part of it's buried in RAM's budget, I think.
Going to come into, it it's just a question of accounting for it properly, right? But that's going to be a change. So what, it's just a change. We have to understand it because in the, in the event, we have to explain it.
Right, because it's going to look like this huge.
If if you look at the spreadsheet, it's going to be like, whoa, what happened to A H M? And it it's not actually a change. But yeah, we will have to net that all out and be able to explain it to people. Okay, that's it. Thanks, Linda.
Okay, as as we talk about liaison reports, I'm going to cover two. The first is the Eastern Highlands Health District. We had the preliminary budget meeting and preliminary budget forecast for next year for Eastern Highlands Health District. And the overall budget increase they're projecting is about three. Three point three percent. But it's a little higher when it comes to Andover because Andover, several of the towns are actually losing population. And Andover right now is increasing population because we have had a bunch of building. Uh, in the last year and a half, um, which is good for us. Um, but it does increase our costs a little bit. The biggest driver of their costs are obviously salary and benefits. There, you know, the, it's too early for anybody to have. Really solid numbers for what the healthcare uh costs are going to be. So there, I think Mansfield is using a placeholder of around five percent increase in healthcare costs. Maybe that it may be a little lower. Their salary is their, you know, their their general salary increase is like two point two percent. For this year. But there's one employee that has attained a much higher level of certification than they had in the past. They had hired him inexpensively uh until he was fully certified and now that he's fully certified. He is going up pretty considerably in salary. They've also presented like a, you know, a health district salary comparison. And Eastern Highlands Health District is still at the low end of the scale across the board, but it's. It's in a reasonable ballpark. And the reason that's important now is. Roughly two years ago, a whole bunch of the members in Eastern Highlands Health Districts got poached by other health districts. Who paid more. Um, and about two years ago, they had to bring everybody's salary up. Because they had three positions that were open that they couldn't fill, frankly. Um, and until they came up with a competitive salary, they were really understaffed and it was getting pretty problematic. So that's Eastern Highlands Health District. It's a fairly low overall expense for the town. You know, so the the actual impact of the increase in funds is like on the order of a thousand dollars a year for Andover. So it's not a big impact, but I'm just letting you know. We are in the second year of a, or correction, the third year. Of a essentially a lock by the insurance company, Kerma. So our insurance rates this year are going to be basically the same. They they basically guarantee and lock for three years at a time that the rates are not going to go up or down more than. Uh, a little bit. I mean, overall, the uh liability policy has actually been going down slightly. Year over year and our workers' comp policy has been going up slightly year over year. You know, they're not going to be exactly the same because as you buy new pieces of equipment and as people, pieces of equipment depreciate. You know, your total valuation goes up and down a little bit and that affects your total costs.
And work comp is going to track salary.
Yeah, so it it tracks salary, but it tracks salary within very narrow categories. Obviously, interestingly enough. Changing from Eddie to a non-union supervisor. Probably decreases our workers' comp costs for that position, even though the salary goes up. So it's not a hundred percent, it's it's by category. Obviously, a public works employee costs you an awful lot more than an office worker who might get carpal tunnelled. But is probably not going to get much more than that. You're certainly not going to get run over with the back. So that's that. And the other thing I want to just give you a a a very. Broad heads up on is that we we are also part of Midne'eroc. Which is basically a recycling consortium. Um, and they are the group and Midne'eroc is basically just a group that's composed of a series of member towns. It's not really technically even a standalone organization. It's really just a subcommittee with membership on a bunch of towns. Um, about fifteen towns and they're the ones that do all the negotiation for everything related to the transfer station. Then they organize the hazardous waste facility in Wellington that we use. We were notified by the state of Georgia, us and about forty or five other entities. That uh there's an investigation going on and we might be liable for some hazardous waste disposal. Basically, we contracted with a contractor to manage hazardous waste facility. And then dispose of the uh waste. And uh. Apparently, some of it was stored in a warehouse in Georgia. And it was discovered by the state of Georgia, basically because the company defaulted on their. Rental of the storage facility. And when the landlord went in to inspect, he found it full of lots of fifty five gallon drums of stuff. So far, there's no indication that they can tie any of the contents of that to us. It's just a bunch of random barrels. But there was also an office in the warehouse that apparently had had a bunch of invoices and a bunch of bills of lading. And some of the bills of lading were for us. So there's no guarantee that it's our waste. None of it spilled. So worst case scenario, we're on the hook for disposal of some stuff that we already paid to dispose of. Our insurance company is involved, the company's insurance company is involved. I mean, it's basically a cluster, but it shouldn't have, it's not going to cost us. But it's not going to cost us money as far as I can tell. Um, it may chew up quite a bit of time and lead to a little bit of uncertainty for a while. Um, probably a bunch of attorneys are going to make money.
Eric, just a, just a sec. This is kind of what I do for my job. So putting aside whether my company will ultimately be involved in this cluster. If there's no actual contamination, you're probably right. It's not going to cost a lot of money. It'll probably be at some non-negligible fee where those, all those fifty five gallon drums have to be disposed of as a proper facility. Body that was being used, obviously, they went out of business, they defaulted, yada yada. So there has to be a removal action. Either by the state of Georgia or by U S C P A. And then what they'll do is they'll take whatever that costs. And they'll do what's called a volumetric ranking usually where, okay, there was a hundred thousand gallons of junk. And you sent ten thousand of them, whatever it is. And ergo, your percentage is X and you pay that. Given what you're describing, it doesn't sound like a huge problem. Great. But this is the sort of thing I see all the time. Uh, it's standard operating procedure for a super front site or a, you know, a removal action where they have. Uh, contamination discovered or or leaky drums or whatever it is. When the state has to come in or the federal government has to come in and do something, uh, they do it based on how much you sent versus what the total. Was. It's usually just whacked up like that.
But the problem is, is that there's no, I mean, to me, from my my layman's perspective. Before we can be liable, you've got to prove that our drums are actually in that facility.
That's true. You're you're not wrong. Um, if they have us on a manifest, though. That's probably good enough. Depends on what the manifest says exactly, but if they have a manifest that says waste in from Andover. That's easy. If it's waste in from hauler X that Andover used. Okay, that's a little more complicated. So it depends. I'm just saying. In my experience, you know, this is, there's a non-negligible. Look, at the end of the day, if you, what you're telling me is correct, that that none of this stuff actually leaked. And there's not actually a contamination problem. It it is not going to be a significant amount of money. When they leak and it has to be actual remediation, oh, that's another story. But even in those situations, when uh you have towns and and I've seen this before. The the towns are usually de minimis parties, which is like de minimis, meaning like you contributed a wee bit. Um, and they get cash out settlements of like ten thousand bucks or something like that. It's it's. So I'm probably jumping at shadows. I'm just based on my experience, I hear these things that you're saying and I'm like, wow, okay. Uh, I see this every day and you know, these are, you know, I'm dealing with million dollar claims on on these sorts of things. But because there's no contamination, I think you're right. It's just something to kind of keep an eye on.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's confusing. So we had a. Contract with a company. To run it. So it's like no, none of our employees, none of us had any, we never touched it.
That doesn't matter.
And it and it's old stuff. The manifest, the the newest manifest they have is from two thousand and fourteen.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. None of that, literally none of that matters. Although the contractor we used is more reliable than we are. But um, none of that matters. The age of it doesn't matter, how it got there, when it got there, none of that matters. The only thing that matters is we contributed. The way the environmental laws are written, um, there's actually a federal um legislation that was passed nineteen eighty that governs this stuff. That every state has mimicked called Circla and the way Circla works, you didn't have to do anything wrong. That's not the point. The point is, you know, there's a problem, you contributed to it, even if you did everything on the up and up.
The thing is, we don't even know whether we contributed. We just separate facts.
And like I said, I may be jumping at shadows here, Eric. I'm just trying to explain to you that this is not. I'd love to nail down that part. Whether any of our stuff is actually even there. Uh, I hear fifty five gallon drums, I hear removal action. Those can actually cost money. It's not as much money as a cleanup. Come, take those, transport them to a proper hazardous waste disposal facility. And so on and so forth, and then there's a bill for that. So anyway, just keep an eye on it. I'm not, I'm going to shut up now. I'm probably going way too far into the weeds on this right now.
Hey, you know, more about this than I do, or apparently anybody.
Unfortunately, this is what I do. This is what I do from the insurance company standpoint, right? This is, I'm a, you know, this is what I handle. These are the claims I have. Uh, and I have to, I would have to immediately recruit myself if travelers was involved at all. Um, but if they're not, then I can at least, you know, you got my ear if you need it.
Then you become the expert, Rob.
Yeah, I mean, I basically just volunteered myself, right? Keep an eye on it and let me know what's going on.
Sure, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for me. I know I said that once already. You're muted, Mark.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Eric and and Rob. It's actually interesting information, but. Um, anything else from a liaison standpoint? I know we only have, they're not always formal, but this is good informal uh reviews as well. Okay, I guess hearing none, our next agenda item is board open discussion. Do we have any open discussion for the board? Do you have any questions or topics?
Eric, could you update the uh, the community slash senior center? Facility where that committee is at this, at this point?
Not really. They haven't met anytime anywhere near recently. Not really, they haven't met anytime anywhere near recently. Um, you gotta get directly with the people on the committee because I don't, I don't set agendas or pick meeting dates for that.
Just didn't know if you had the information, so.
I, no, I don't, I mean, the last Adrian and I reviewed a set of very preliminary. Like feasibility sketches for how you could build a low cost. Um, very versatile building. Um, and what the size and cost impacts of that were. Um, but the the group as a whole hasn't reviewed it and made any kind of decisions on what the next steps are.
Any other questions or open discussion? Okay, hearing none, our next agenda item is twelve, open speak. I'm sorry, public speak, uh, do you have any members of the public that care to speak? I hear none or see none on their uh attendee list. Okay, our next item would be adjournment. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Pretty reliable that way, thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adjourn and Kurt seconds the motion, thank you. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand, aye. Any opposed? Any care to abstain? Okay, then that uh, pat motion passes, we will adjourn the meeting and just uh. Like to wish you all a very happy and safe holiday season, uh happy new year, we probably won't be speaking directly before. Twenty twenty-one, I hope uh twenty twenty-one brings us a little more uh clarity, smoothness and uh and uh. Togetherness than we've had in twenty twenty, let's put it that way.
Thanks, Mark, I agree. And Eric, by the way, thanks for all the info tonight, that was a lot.
Yeah, it's it's good to have those updates and keeping us posted, it's appreciated.
Yeah, no problem, anything else you wanna hear, just let me know. I'll provide when I can.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.